Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting. I'm Bob, June 17th, 2020. As we start every meeting, usually when we're meeting together in the library, I'd like to remind everyone this being broadcast live, so keep that in consideration. It's also being recorded for use at a later date if needed. Having said that, they have to take a roll call, but I'm gonna have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance to the flag, so please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag? Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic.
Which stands one nation under God. Thank you, everyone. Just a couple of quick notes before we get, I'm gonna roll call attendance and I'm gonna do a couple of quick notes just for housekeeping. Mr. Boyce?
Yes, here.
Don Byers?
Yes.
Ian Colly?
Yes.
Chris Howard?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Robbie O'Brien, he's absent, right, Michelle? Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Fred Small?
Yes.
Ellie Taylor?
Hello, yes.
And Bob Hayes, present. So Robbie O'Brien's the only one absent, Michelle?
Yep, seems that way.
Okay. Well, just a few notes, town elections, Whitman and Hanson's town elections are held Saturday, June 27th. This is Robbie O'Brien's last meeting tonight, but he will not be attending this evening. He is giving up his school committee seat, but I believe he has been on for two terms, am I correct, Michelle? Two or three? You're muted.
I'm sorry, I wasn't ready for that question, I'd have to take a quick look, but it could be three.
I think it's three.
I think it's nine years.
For a total of nine years, so I'd like to thank Robbie publicly for his service to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District. Nine years is a long time to be on any type of committee, so thank you, Mr. O'Brien. We appreciate it. The next school committee meeting is June 29th at 6:00 PM for reorganization. We reorg after every single vote in town when we're taking on new members, so keep that in mind. School committee meeting, June 29th, 6 o'clock, for reorganization. Town meeting in Hanson is on July 20th, and the town meeting in Whitman has been moved to July 27th. Questions, anyone? Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May 27th, 2020.
So moved by Dan?
Second by Mr. Boyce.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Miss Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Colly?
Yes.
Mr. Howard? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien? Absent. Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ellie Taylor?
Yes.
And Bob Hayes, yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of May 18th, 2020.
So moved by Dan?
Second by Mr. Boyce.
Okay. Discussion? Seeing none? Can I hear somebody? Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Miss Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Colly?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Robbie's absent, Mr. Scrivens?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Jeff, you're up, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Bob. So we officially closed the door on the school year 2019, 2020. On Monday, the 15th, report cards were sent out, K-8. Parents would have seen on their report card a little something different of a pass fail for the school year due to the fact that at least three months were out, we were out of school due to COVID, and we wanted to make sure that students had received an equitable evaluation over that timeframe. The high school report cards went out as well, they did something a little bit differently. The quarter four report card was credit, no credit, and students were able to earn an extra 10 points if they participated in online learning or remote learning. The one thing that is still outstanding, we will have to have another Chromebook pickup. We received about two-thirds of Chromebooks that we lent out to the community during COVID. We will run that sometime next week. Jason Cook returns from vacation, I think tomorrow, and we will schedule something for parents to drop off those Chromebooks. I can't thank facilities and operations enough for the distribution and collection of the Chromebooks during this pandemic. It has gone off flawlessly. It shows how valuable of an asset we have in our people who have worked through this and conditioned those devices, because each device had to be reconfigured from the school setting to a home setting. The plan for this summer is to not recondition them for school as of yet, and I'll get into what reopening might look like, but there's a strong probability, possibility that we will have to do some sort of remote learning next year. Teachers were out. They came in, there was quite a few folks that cleaned out their classrooms and did their things for the summer, but we are officially closed for the 2019-20 school year. Any questions on closing?
Anyone?
Okay, graduation, we went over some graduation things with Dr. Jones today, we're still looking for July 31st. Right now, the location looks to be outside of the stadium on the JV baseball softball fields in that area, soccer fields. That way there, we can put up a stage, we can have our students socially distanced with the entire graduating class, and we're looking at our tickets per graduate and putting families in a group or a little block, six feet apart from others. The plan is to have only, and this is for us, it's a little change, only the principal and the class speakers will be on stage, we're gonna have to keep them socially distant as they go through the ceremony, but we will try to make it as eloquent and as celebratory as we can for the class of 2020. Chris is still working out the details of graduation, but as a school committee, you're all invited, we will have dignitaries there. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be warm, and we're trying to take timing into consideration. If it's at 6 o'clock at night on July 31st, it can be pretty warm. We moved it from the football field so it wouldn't absorb as much heat, and also, we would have had to purchase or rent special chairs for that ceremony. The challenge right now is to make sure we have enough power to power up our audio systems that we're gonna be renting for that ceremony, and the details will be given out as they come. But I just wanted to let the committee know that we're still looking for July 31st if we're in Phase 3, if it's okay with Department of Public Health in both communities, if it's okay with, through the governor's recommendations. I know some schools have done some graduations, both virtually, both drive-through and actual live, but with not the entire class sitting in chairs. So this is a work in progress, but I'll keep the committee up to date. But I think it's important that the public knows that we're still looking for that live graduation on the 31st.
Questions, anyone, about graduation?
Chair Hayes? Not a question, not a question. I'm hearing from, sorry, I'm hearing from Whitman parents that this is not streaming on the Whitman cable access. Can we ask WHCA to check that? They're saying the library is showing a library meeting, so I'm sorry to interrupt.
No worries. Ryan, can you hear me? Ryan Tully? Unmute, please. Jeff, can you text him?
Yeah, I will text Ryan.
We continue with the meeting and...
I know it's streaming on the Hanson side, yes, it is, just wanted to cover both.
Chris?
What about Channel 98?
I was just gonna say what Don said, so I think if in the interim while they're working on it, folks that are online, I think they can go to the WHCA site on the Hanson side and they can see it, or hear it.
Yes.
Tell everyone it is on the Hanson stream was the Channel 98.
And Channel 98, yep.
The message I just got from Ryan.
Well, that's the educational, that's the normal school stream.
Right, some were given, Whitman parents were given the link just directly to WHCA Whitman. So I know how to access the Hanson side, but they may not know where to go back to the original, find the Hanson.
I believe it's WHCA Live or Watch Live, and there's two options, Whitman or Hanson?
Right.
The only problem we're gonna have is the people that can't see us aren't gonna get that message or hear us, right? So I don't know if, I don't know if Jeff, you wanna push something out real quick on Facebook? I don't know if it's worth it, but the people that are, the people that we're talking to can hear us.
Can they turn off that Larry meeting and turn on this meeting? I'm not sure how.
Well, we're gonna give it, we're gonna give it a minute and see what happens here. Don, are you talking with anybody? Why isn't it streaming in Whitman, Ryan? It's on Channel 98 in Whitman, like usual, no problems, was a message I just got from one of the selectmen.
Right, but the link online for WHCA Live Whitman is showing a recording of the library meeting. So there are parents that were given just that link, and they don't believe the meeting's happening because they're seeing a recording of the library. So if we can get the live feed there, that would be great.
Everybody, I hope anyone who's listening gets that. Library meeting is live, from Ryan Tully to everyone, the library meeting is live.
Oh.
And Channel 98 would be the normal way they would access our school committee meeting through cable. They wouldn't access it on the web, so to speak.
But not all people have cable either.
Michelle, you're muted if you're still talking to me.
Can we stream it on both? I mean, didn't we have this already booked? Shouldn't we be streaming to both towns?
Ryan, I'm sure you can't hear.
That is, it looks like it's Michael Gant shared in Dollars for Scholars meeting or something.
Channel 98 would be the normal way they would access our school committee meeting through cable.
Hey, folks.
It's Eric Dresser.
Yeah, Eric here from Cable.
Yes.
Not all people have.
The meeting that is on the Whitman channel right now is live, and it cannot be preempted.
So let's just continue.
Can you hear me, folks?
Can we stream it on both? I mean, didn't we?
Okay, so what's streaming on the WHCA.TV is actually what's on the government channel for Whitman, correct? Eric, is that what I'm getting out of what you just said?
It looks like it's...
Hey, folks, can you hear me?
Michael Gant.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
So the meeting that is airing on, the meeting that's airing on the stream channel right now is live, and it cannot be preempted.
Okay, but our meeting is as quote-unquote "normal" being broadcast on Channel 98, which is our educational channel?
That is correct.
So people just need to go to Channel 98?
Yeah, we just, unfortunately, have some logistics. We have to use one stream for the live library meeting and the other stream for this, just in order for us to deal with some of our remote inner workings here of how we operate this. So if the Whitman Library Board of Trustees meeting, which is occurring live right now, ends, we can pop that on at that time, but until then, we've gotta stick with this arrangement that we have currently. Eric, is it possible?
More people can go to Hanson.
One at a time, guys.
I will look into that, that's not something I know how to do, Ryan may, we'll do what we can, we can also possibly get something to social media. But again, anybody who's looking for this, there's no restriction as to having to be in Hanson to watch the Hanson livestream. I know a few folks in Whitman that are watching it via that livestream, as are we from our homes outside of town.
Okay, so Michelle, we can move forward?
I'll post the feed on the Facebook page, that's about all I can do right now.
And Dan Moyarty posted that on the Facebook site as well, that the Hanson feed, so we're working on it.
Okay, so Jeff, continue on, you're starting at summer programs.
Thank you very much. So summer programs, after a lengthy discussion with members of the leadership team, we're gonna try to gradually reopen some summer programs here on campus in the district, meaning sports clinics for our youth, sponsored by some of the high school coaches. The summer camps that we run are clinics in the high school. Science camp, 3D camp are on the block. The YMCA is going to use Duval, and the North River Collaborative will use their classrooms in the summer, following strict guidelines set up through Mass DPH. Lisa Tobin's taking the lead for the safety and the health precautions that we need to have. I will be meeting with YMCA and North River next week. We met with athletics about our coaches and the clinics that they're going to run to make sure that everybody's healthy, but I thought it was important, we thought it was important as a group to make sure we get some kids involved in some things this summer, to get them reacclimated socially with peers and have some fun, since many camps and summer camps have been closed. We're looking at Phase 3, starting after the 4th of July, if that's what is consistent from the governor's office. So those summer programs will be up and running, hopefully sometime mid-July, August, as we go to get our kids back involved and some fun stuff on school grounds.
Questions about summer programs, anyone?
Jeff, will you be posting updates on the district Facebook page, probably?
Yeah, as we, as we roll out a calendar of events, and once we establish what parents might have to do, all that information will go out on the website, under athletics, and pushing it on the Facebook page as well.
Thank you.
Chair Hayes, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Ellie.
Jeff, I'm just wondering if we can potentially open for our summer programs at the high school, would we be able to open the school to rent out for activities and maybe earn back some revenue?
So that's next on my list.
Ah, sorry, I jumped on.
So, other questions on summer programs?
Yeah, Dan has one.
Go ahead, Dan.
Talking about sports, are they gonna be checking these kids' temperatures and everything else?
So we're gonna go by the protocols that are established right now, and the temperature check doesn't seem to be one of the things that they're asking folks to do, but we will follow precautions as far as the socially distant piece, masks when needed, and then the cleanliness factor of cleaning up the spaces that they use afterward. So I just wanted to let the committee know that we're gonna move forward with this. They won't be starting before our next meeting, so we can go over some of the logistics. But we met Monday and figured if under Phase 3, camps and some of the outdoor activities were being loosened by the state, that we would have the opportunity to make sure our kids could partake in some of those activities here on campus.
Anyone else? Okay.
So building use is an issue that we discussed. All the camps and clinics will be run by people that are accountable to us, and I'm very hesitant, and I'm gonna leave this up to the committee to discuss and potentially vote on. My recommendation is not opening up for building use until after Labor Day, until we're back in session and we have a real idea of guidelines. My concern about opening up, although it's a revenue source, we won't be able to control the folks that come into our Performing Arts Center. Through clinics and camps that we're running in, we're gonna know who the parents are, we're gonna know who the participants are, and if we did hold something in our Performing Arts Center, we will not know who's using that, for instance, you know, if they're gonna enforce social distancing, if they're gonna enforce masks, and we won't really be able to trace anybody. If somebody ends up getting sick at an event that we have, we won't have any way to contact those folks. So I'm very hesitant to reopen the Performing Arts Center until after we really get back to school and really looking at after September 7th as being Labor Day.
Questions, anyone, Fred?
Also, I would think that we might face some liabilities by having the building open to people that we don't know, we can't control, and we can't trace.
Fred, that's exactly what my concern is. I won't have, I will have, I will have maintenance staff potentially here, but if somebody rents it out for an event on a Friday night, I'm not gonna, you know, I don't know if our law enforcement would enforce that, but I don't wanna be liable for folks that, for folks that aren't following the guidelines as set forth by us as a district and by the governor.
Ellie?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, would there be a way to put it in a contract that they had to sign, like an addendum, saying that they have to enforce social distancing and maybe we can, like if they wanted to do that, that they would have to do a, take the temperatures or something and make sure that they're wearing face masks? Could we do an addendum to a contract just so that we don't lose that potential revenue?
I think, I'm concerned again about the, I think that would be a piece of it, but I think the enforceability of that contract, again, we had this conversation, if we run a clinic and it's Bob Rogers running a clinic, he won't be invited back to coach because he's a staff member of ours. I'm just concerned about the liability and the enforcement of the folks that come in. We're not gonna have any control over somebody that comes in from another community, and if they pay us a fine or whatever, I'm just concerned. It's, I might not even have the staff necessarily to help support that. We are on bare-bones staff anyway for the summer, and the fact of trying to bring in the revenue, the revenue might not outweigh the risk of this and the challenge of this to make sure it goes off well. So again, this is why I'm leaving up to the committee, if the committee decides to move forward and say we open it up, I'm okay with that, we'll work it out, I'll present it again at our plan in June before we leave for July. But my recommendation to the committee is to pump the brakes on it a little bit, knowing my staffing concerns, knowing the social distancing concerns, and the revenue that we bring in isn't gonna solve the budget issues of both the communities for the summer.
Before we go to Fred, Fred was next. Jeff, there are other concerns too, I'm sure the Board of Health would probably wanna weigh in on some of this from either town, and also, the governor, I don't believe, has listed saying that you can have 100 people doing anything they want, any time that they want, so I believe that's a concern. Fred, you're up next.
And one of my concerns with the Board of Health, the other thing is also our increased cost of disinfection and how quickly we do it. I mean, you'd have to charge quite a good sum of money to make sure that the entire areas were properly disinfected, and that's money that is not gonna be reimbursable by the federal government. You know, so how much would we ultimately end up making? I'd be willing to make a motion that we hold off until, at minimum, Labor Day, considering opening up the buildings to any rentals or, you know, building used to any outside parties as per the recommendation of the superintendent.
I'll second that, Mr. Boyce.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Ellie, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a random question, because I've had several people asking me about, you know, potentially renting.
I see you, Dan.
Is there, do you know if there would be any way that, like, that parking lot or something could be used, specifically for a dance recital with just families? Because I've had dance owners, studio owners, asking me. Because nobody, you know, they wanna try to have, like, recitals and whatnot, so.
I look into that. But as far as, you know, restroom facilities and those things, it's concerning for, it's gonna be challenging enough to bring some of our kids on over the summer. We're still trying to work through our mandated programs by the state for extended school year. This is all new, and I'm just asking for folks who wanna use our beautiful facility to be patient. I don't wanna misstep or put the district in liability, and I know people wanna use it, people wanna get out and do things, but we wanna make sure we do it well and we ensure proper safety for all. And then, as to go to Mr. Small, the cost, I don't even know the cost, if it would be cost prohibitive for somebody to come in and rent out the facility because of the labor and the cost of the cleaning product itself. And we're still waiting for guidelines from the state to see what it's gonna be like to infect. But we can look into that as well, Ellie, and if we can make modifications during the course, if that's what the committee wants to do after, at our next meeting, we can look at that as well.
I fully agree with not opening up the school, because we don't want that added liability or the additional cost of having to clean the school, but I'm just kinda thinking of other ways that we could potentially make some revenue. Obviously, it's not gonna be a ton, but something.
Agreed, Dan. And then Mike Jones?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Jones, he was next after me, he's been patient. Had a couple things, most of it was covered with the disinfectant, but one other thing I noticed some of the restaurants will be doing when they opened up for tracing, you have to give them your name and contact point in order to, because if something happens, they'll be able to notify anybody who was there during that day. So you'd have to set up some protocol like that, and that's, that's, like we say, overhead. So opening up isn't, we're not gonna make any revenue, it's gonna cost us money at this point. Our main concern right now is, let's focus on getting the school back in, if we can get the school back online, get the students back. I don't see us making money off renting out the building right now because of the unknowns of all what we just discussed, the disinfecting and all that, we don't know what it's gonna cost to cleanse every time something comes in. So, we have enough on our plate. Pull back open, that's, that would be my concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
Money left and right.
Mike Jones, Dan, just so you'll know, some of us only hear in every third, second, or third word, your connection's not real good.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, Jones?
Yeah, Jeff, what is your opinion, July, we're gonna have two town meetings, Whitman and Hanson. They want, I know there was some discussion to use the high school, but even if they don't use the high school, they're gonna be using our middle schools or what? What is your opinion on that?
So, great question. Bob, if you don't mind me jumping down to the Whitman middle, uh, town meeting reschedule day.
Go, go, go.
So Whitman and, I had a conver, I know Frank's on the line here too. Frank and I walked through the gymnasium almost a month ago about looking at using the middle, the high school gymnasium as a town meeting site. We can appropriately socially distance, I think, Frank, 300-plus people in the gymnasium, and we can fit another 100 to 100 and a quarter socially distant potentially in the Performing Arts Center. But I also sent both communities a note on Monday that we can work with both communities to have an outdoor event if needed, using same area that the high school's gonna use their graduation. We will have the equipment, the chairs, and we can stage an outdoor town meeting for both communities. I actually had a conversation with Mr. Mitchell this morning, and he just wanted my thought on it, because that's been floating around. I know some communities are doing outdoor events for their town meetings, but I think we can socially accommodate, because again, going back to town meeting, people are checking in. We will know who those folks are, so if it's a tracing issue, they're our local residents. They are, they have an invested interest in the health and safety of the folks around them, I hope. So if we do a town meeting in our gymnasium, I believe we can socially distance an approximate amount of folks inside, and we can also do it outside as well for those town meetings. So I'm a proponent of that town meeting, using the high school facility, it's big enough, and it would be, it would be okay for us to do that.
Thank you.
Mike?
You're welcome.
Frank? Frank Lineham's with us, Frank?
Yeah, Bob, I spoke with Mike Sealy, our moderator, um, two days ago, it seems like a week ago. Uh, he is actually, uh, seriously considering an outdoor event. Um, partly because it may make people feel more comfortable than being in a confined space. And certainly part of that is driven by the thought of how hot that gym may get if we put a few hundred people in there. Where there's no AC. So I'm not certain at this point. I'm going to discuss it with the selectmen on Tuesday night and see what their thought is. Um, I mean, the, the, uh, end of July is probably the worst time to hold a meeting anywhere, but, uh, that's what we're blessed with. So, we'll see if we can get some consensus and then give you a heads up early.
Thanks, Frank. Any other questions or discussions? I have a motion. Fred?
And just real quick, it's beautiful here under the stars.
Well, I was gonna say we could do it at the beach, but it might be a stretch to get the residents there, you know? Mr. Scriven.
Right, guys, just wondering about, um, the weather. Um, would this be, you know, how would we, we're raining out, and how might that affect the worms and, I mean?
Get a motion, though. We have to finish the motion.
Oh, sorry.
And then we can, it's a separate line item.
All right, anyone else? I have a motion in a second to, and the motion was to keep the building closed until we're back in school.
For building use.
Not rented, not rented as per.
The building used, rented.
Right, right, as per the superintendent's recommendations.
Right.
So if the superintendent deems, deems it feasible and necessary to do a town meeting, I would think that that motion would still give him the latitude to do that.
That's correct.
Inside the gymnasium.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Colony?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien is absent. Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yeah.
Staylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay. Jesse reopening guidance.
So I'm sure you've seen some things, uh, all over social media, all over the media, uh, about what school could potentially look like in September. And, and the honest answer I have right now is we really don't know. Uh, we were on a call with the commissioner last week. It looks like there are three, that he's working with his reopening group, which is, is, involves, uh, folks from the associations, health departments, um, MIAA, teachers, administrators, superintendents are on this, on this team. There are, there are a few things he's got. It looks like, uh, uh, almost like a stoplight. Uh, red is all remote learning, yellow is potentially a hybrid of remote learning and in-class learning, and green, which was, uh, is a full go-to-school. There haven't been determinations where we would end up. Um, one of the things he's floated out over the course of the past month is if, you know, a certain community would have latitude, if they were a hotspot for a resurgence of the virus, they would go immediately to red. Uh, but he thinks most of us would be in the yellow model at opening, and, um, some communities who have not been affected by this, and there are certain parts of the state that haven't been, would might, would might, or, or would go totally green. He did tell us that there would be some directives as far as what school will look like, as far as grading and content and attendance and things like that. But those are the guidance, those haven't been necessarily firmed out yet, um, or, or delivered to us. Um, there has been a lot of talk about PPE and purchasing, and I know the committee's gonna, gonna address something from MASC later on in the meeting. But, uh, rough estimates in the guidelines of, of, of some states, I'm, I'm just giving you a ballpark figure. Um, it looks like it would cost us close to four hundred and sixty dollars per pupil for PPE. Uh, that means sanitation, equipment, masks, things like that. Um, and that's about one point eight, one point nine million dollars. Um, right now, that's at the local level. So, George was, is, is looking at what we might have to buy. He's been purchasing PPE already for us for the summer. Um, some of the things like the directions of using a third of a gallon hand sanitizer per classroom per day are some of the guidelines. I don't know if those guidelines will loosen up. Um, but those are the things that we look at for the opening of school in September right now or August. Um, and we're just waiting for some guidance. But just for the community to know, um, if the guidance is what has been delivered in the media as far as PP protection to make sure our students can come back, um, the ballpark is about one point eight million dollars or four sixty a kid. Um, we still haven't talked about so, the social distance piece. The ten-person per classroom was in the media. The commissioner did not reaffirm that at all. Um, he said more guidance will be delivered by the end of the month. He actually gave the date of this Friday at one point, but then extended that to the end of the month. So by the end of June, hopefully at our next meeting, I'd have to deliver, have some more deliverables for you. But right now, when, when you ask the superintendent anywhere in the Commonwealth or the assistant superintendent, what does school look like, we really don't know. So we're planning for a multiple, for multiple openings. We're planning for a fully remote opening. We're planning for a hybrid. We're also planning for a, a regular school day with kids socially distant. What kind of schedule? It might be an abbreviated day, it might be a half-day. We're not sure. So I'm not trying to blow folks off sometimes and like, do you know anything? We really don't. And, um, I don't wanna misspeak on behalf of the commissioner, uh, because the guidance haven't been officially put out yet. Um, so we will let you know as a committee, we will let the community know as, as, as much information as we have to date. One thing we are doing, uh, at the end of this week, we are sending out a survey home to parents, uh, about remote learning, their remote learning experience, and whether or not, based on the current guidelines, they will be willing to send their kids back to school and/or ride the school bus. So if, uh, when we send that out, I, I will be asking parents to really dutifully fill out that survey. It's not long, but it will really help us to, uh, to develop a plan of what worked and what didn't work, uh, as we move through a potential remote, at least somewhat of a remote learning experience for our kids next year. We're also surveying the staff on their remote experience and how we as a district can assist them, what worked and what didn't work, um, in that remote learning process. As we, as we matriculate over the summer, uh, Kevin and Cindy are on this call, but we've, we, we have weekly updates with them as well about what we might be looking at for a September opening of, of school. And putting, putting together a, a BOU with the association as far as guidelines, as far as expectations from the commissioner, expectations from the regional district, and working with, with both of them. And they've been phenomenal working with us this, so far, this, 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 uh, since the closure and even before, but since the closure, uh, as far as communicating the needs of the association and, um, and then hearing the needs from, from us as the district to make sure that we're putting out the best product we can for our kids in the situation that we're in, and then making that product better for our kids and a, and a better learning experience if we do have to do some sort of remote learning next year. And, and, and again, if you look at, at the media, if you look, watch any news station, uh, they're not sure. Everybody's speculating, uh, of what that looks like. I've heard we're gonna go full, totally green, uh, we're not, COVID's gone, and we're back to school with the vaccination, uh, full sports programs, and I've heard, nope, we're, we're not gonna be back because we'll be spiking again, and we're gonna be totally remote. So we're just looking for guidance from the, from the commissioner's office, from the governor's office. And as we move forward, that, that information will be delivered to you.
Don, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair Hayes. Jeff, um, if we're in a stage, thank you for the surveys, it sounds great. Um, in surveying the teachers on their experience with remote learning, I'm wondering if we get to a status of hybrid or green to return to school. Are there any teachers who feel uneasy about that? And what if they were not ready to and, uh?
That, that is, that is in the survey as well, and that's something we're gonna work out with Kevin and Cindy. Um, because we do, we will have students that, um, have autoimmune issues. We will have, we have teachers that have health issues, and they, and we have staff that have children and, and spouses and folks with health issues. So there's a lot to work out. So the summer, I know we're out for the summer, folks are out. This is not gonna be a, a, a non-working summer for us here and, and working to try to plan for all the scenarios that, that, that are, are coming at us. We're very concerned about kids that might have issues or anxiety about coming to school and how we matriculate them. Same thing with our teachers and how they can deliver a quality education if they're not uh, physically or, or, or able to because of a, an autoimmune issue to come back to their classroom until we actually have a, a full green. And even when we have a full green, what that's gonna look like. So there's a lot of little things that we wanna make sure that we're prepared for, and that's why I, I do appreciate the committee's support of my recommendation of kinda closing the school to outside groups, at least at the high school. So that's one less thing on, on our plate that we have to worry about, um, as we move into August and September.
Thank you.
Fred?
Uh, when you're doing the survey, are you taking into consideration, uh, I mean, try and buy an in-law house in these, in this part of the state right now? You know, they're gone in two seconds. You have a lot of family situations, even my own, you know, where, you know, children, grandchildren are thirty feet down the hall, so to speak. Uh, you know, keeping that in mind, you know, for some of the older population as well. You know, that might not be something parents would think about, you know, in answering the survey about their child, et cetera, but I can tell you from someone that has little ones running around, it is something that you think about.
Yep. So that's why I think it's really important, and I'm glad you're getting that out there, that parents look at. Sometimes I see surveys from, from my kid's school and we kinda check the boxes. Uh, this is an important thing to look at. Um, and when we send it out, I really, and I kinda threw that out there on social media the other day, they're gonna get one. We really need the input. It helps drive our program and make decisions based upon all those nuances of who, who the grandkids, who the primary caretaker is, if, if they're at risk and, and how we develop our program for, for August and September. Um, so it's important that people fill out that survey.
Else? Okay, Jeff, thank you.
Thanks, Bob. So, uh, moving on, uh, I'm, I'm asking the committee to officially appoint, uh, Mr. Tuffy as our business, uh, uh, director of business and finance for the twenty-one, twenty, uh, for the twenty-twenty-one school year. Uh, John will stay on part-time. Uh, we've worked out a, a, a day schedule, a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And if he's needed on Monday or Friday, I can get to him, but his official office hours will be three days a week. Uh, he's brought in some, some consistency to our office. Uh, he's a, a wealth of information. Uh, he's taught George and I quite a bit of information about, about school districts and budgets and things like that, and we, we really appreciate him, uh, a- as we kinda dragged him back into this situation. He took it voluntarily as an interim, but he's agreed to stay on and I think help us through, through the, this next fiscal crisis of, of, of FY22 that we're gonna join it to. So I, I'm looking, uh, for the official appointment of Mr. Tuffy.
I have to change the motion to.
Motion. For the FY21 school budget and school season.
Seconded by Ally.
Chris?
Howard? I, I am, I am in full support of Mr. Tuffy rejoining us on a part-time basis. I think he's done a great job. Um, my only question back to Jeff would be, you know, and I, and I think, you know, John on a part-time basis is probably, um, it's, it's gotta be getting close to most on a full-time basis, so I, I, I give him credit for that. My concern and question would be, I think we're about to hit some unprecedented uh, times in terms of, uh, educational finances, and there's a lot that's gonna come with it. So, um, is there any other consideration for any other supplemental positions or support to make sure that, um, we, we can do what we need to do? I mean, I'm just, I'm listening to some of these budget numbers that are coming out of the state. Uh, I, I just, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot. So I, I certainly welcome Mr. Tuffy in this role. My only question is, are we, are we willing to consider maybe getting some additional help if we need it at some point?
Jeff?
Yeah, so, so one of the things that, uh, with John being on a, on a, a part-time schedule, uh, I budgeted for a full-time position. So if we do need to bring in somebody part-time, if John feels that he needs some assistance, um, I'm willing to look at that. We just won't wanna make sure that we've got a quality person to, to be able to assist him. Um, we're working already to try to, to feel out who can replace him in, in the next school year. So I've got some folks out there looking and, and looking at this position, and John might be even taking some folks on as interns next year to, to, to replace him. Cuz he, he pretty much told me he's not staying for another full year. So, um, I appreciate that from the committee, though. Uh, I, next year will be unprecedented as well. Um, so if, if you're supportive of us, I might come to you at the end of August or even in July and say, hey, look, we need to post for a part-time, this, whatever, whatever. Um, that would be helpful for us if, if John feels he needs support.
And to add to that, Chris, before we go to Fred, Fred has a question. If you recall back a few months ago, the pool didn't have a lot of applicants when we were looking. And I believe this is why we asked Mr. Tuffy to stay on. We could maybe keep the feelers out there a little bit longer and see if we had some more applicants come aboard. So, Fred?
Uh, well, barring this being a three to five-year contract, uh, which I don't think it, uh, can be for Mr. Tuffy. Uh, if we could, you know, and, uh, to relate Chris's point, uh, cuz I think you hit the nail on the head there. Uh, be actively searching, uh, for a number two that could revolve into the number one, uh, when we do finally let Mr. Tuffy go, so to speak. Uh, when he finally says, okay, that's it, guys, I am gonna retire and I really mean it this time. Uh, you know, I think that would be money very well spent. So I'm glad to hear that you budgeted for the full-time position. Uh, with the eyes of being able to have someone onboard perhaps by next budget season at the very latest to walk through, you know, that, uh, whole cause. So I just wanted to reiterate, and I think it's just an absolute wonderful thing to have Mr. Tuffy back for a year.
Ian Colony?
Yeah, I just wanna say, Chris, exactly what I was gonna say, and what Fred was just saying was the second part of what I was gonna say. Um, having Mr. Tuffy's been great, but, you know, we do know he doesn't want to be here full, you know, full-time, and we do need a full-time person. Um, we are still gaining knowledge from John. But like what Fred said, I think we should, we should still be fully looking for somebody full-time. So take the opportunity we have with John still staying behind, I don't know if you guys have released his chain or not, but, um, while he's still here, look for another good candidate to replace when he decides to pull the plug. At least that, they were not like at the last minute looking for someone here. So, yeah, with both Chris and with both Fred said, I think, you know, that's something we should still be doing going forward is, so when Mr. Tuffy decided to retire, we, we can have a replacement.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, I wanna thank John Tuffy for staying on board, and I think there are probably a large pool of MBA college graduates coming out of programs looking for an opportunity. So, um, that would be great if we can, um, seek those candidates out. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to the vote. Steve Boyce?
Yes.
Spires?
Yes.
Mr. Colony?
Yes.
The Howard?
Yes.
The Jones?
I know.
Mike, you're muted.
Yes.
Bobby O'Brien's absent. Chris Scriven?
Yes.
Chris, Fred Small?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Ally Taylor?
Absolutely, yes.
Bob Hayes, absolutely, yes. Thanks, John. Thank you for what you've been doing for.
So the, the next thing, I'm gonna let John talk about transportation, uh, because he's got a transportation update for us.
So for some time, we've been talking about our transportation vendors and, um, how do we make an adjustment with them because they haven't provided us twelve months worth of service. Um, has to do with the fact that the state closed schools. Uh, what is our obligation to them to be fully prepared to, to, uh, come back and, and run buses when we need them? And certainly for the first six weeks that we had them on hiatus, uh, we fully expected or, or certainly recognized the strong possibility we would need all of some of their services. After a fair amount of conversation back and forth, um, we've, I'm coming to you and asking for your permission to, to exercise a contract amendment, uh, first with, uh, first student who provides the big yellow buses for us, that we will pay them thirty percent of what our normal contract price is. Um, that will cover a significant portion of their overhead and the sorts of things that they needed to do to be mobile. Um, that will cover a significant portion of their overhead and the sorts of things that they needed to do to be mobilized to to respond, to keep the buses, um, inspected and on the road. It does not pay for for any of their salaries or benefits.
So what what's the motion you're looking for? And then we'll move to the discussion, Fred.
So, and then, well, there's also a second, a second vendor. So why don't we do this one first as a separate motion then? Uh, to, um, to authorize the the district to settle with first student for a rate of thirty percent of, uh, normal expenses for regular transportation.
An entertaining motion as discussed by Mr. Tuffy.
So moved, Mr. Boyce.
Second?
Yes, by Mrs. Taylor.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Small, you had your hand up.
Yeah, uh, how does that affect reimbursement? Uh, would the thirty, would that be reimbursable expense to us? So it actually in net effect cost us, uh, seventeen and a half percent?
Well, we will be. Correct. We will be able to file for the thirty percent that we would pay, that we will pay first student. Um, state has been very clear about that.
Okay.
Mr. Howard and then Miss Spires.
So, um, so I'm not familiar with all the terms of the contract specifically, just so, I I don't mean this as a flip question. I mean, this is a a general understanding. So what happens if we don't pay it? Whatever we don't pay.
Um.
There is a language in the contract that top, again, I don't know what's in the contract.
Well, if we don't pay them, I suspect we're going to buy a lawsuit out of this. Their their complaint will be that that, um, the contract requires them to do certain things to, uh, to, uh, be prepared, to be mobilized, to respond to, to, uh, to the contract that they signed with us. And but for the contract, they would not have been out of pocket for these expenses.
Great. Thank you.
That's, that's the background behind this.
Thank you.
John?
John, do you have any knowledge of other districts that are negotiating their contract with first student and is it a similar negotiation of thirty percent?
Yes, it is. Um, we, along with several other um, uh, school districts here in in the South Shore, uh, have approached, uh, first student together. Uh, rather than make this sort of a painful one, uh, one that I and have come to a joint agreement that this is the best we can do and it's fair to both sides.
Okay. And as the district, I believe, um, for transportation, are we entering our final year of the contract with them?
Yes, we are.
This coming FY twenty-one. Right. So should we not pay them? We're going to need them hopefully at one point or another. So this would be almost a good faith payment in some sense.
Well, I think, again, I think it's a fair arrangement for both sides.
Right. Okay. And without just, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Just without discussing the other motion you have, um, I don't know if you can say how this may differ from the other transportation contract or it's different circumstance.
Well, it's somewhat.
Pick it up until we get to the second motion, please.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Fred?
Uh, I just want to, you know, make sure I have the math right in my mind. So we'd be looking at a net payment of four hundred and eighty thousand, uh, or gross payment, I should say, with a cost to us after reimbursement of around eighty-six thousand.
That that sounds about right.
Okay.
Numbers are slightly different, but that's about right.
Ally?
Fred asked my question. I was curious about the numbers, but I'm good now. Thanks.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Mr. Boyce?
Yeah, um, thank you, John. So going into the new year, we're obviously already in committed. Or are we waiting a little bit before hitting that commitment line for transportation, just based on what superintendent has been explaining to us with re.
We have a, we have a firm contract with first student for next year. Correct. Exactly what kinds of services we're going to need, um, we're going to be in the same position as every other school district and and that is, we don't really know. It's, um, we're going to, we're going to have to work our way through it. But there are an awful lot of things as we start the the twenty-twenty-one school year that, um, are going to be different, new to us. Very good. Thank you.
Ally?
I'm sorry, just, um, I'm I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but first student is still our only option for busing, correct? So we really ought to do this.
Right at the current point right now it is.
Yes.
Well, I I'd say my understanding is that last time that you went out for bid, the only the only successful bidder, the only person who'd been turned in a bid, I can't even say successful, was first student. It's not an uncommon happenstance here on the South Shore.
They have like a monopoly on it, I guess.
And actually across the state and, uh, I I don't know if it's proper to bring this up now, but or as we, you know, progress in our meeting, but I really think that we should, uh, at least do the math as to what it would cost to run our own buses. Uh, and able to determine what the best, you know, solution for our district is. And maybe that gives us a little bit of negotiating leverage at the same time. Uh, because one of the things the state does indicate in, uh, regional transportation is they want you to have skin in the game to try and get as good of a deal as possible as opposed to the one hundred percent reimbursement that they had committed to at one point in time. Or the way the statute was written initially with the magic word subject to appropriation. Uh, you know, I'm just thinking that's about the only negotiating leverage you have. You look at some of the smaller bus companies and, you know, first student sort of discourages them from bidding on your contract and they let them know that they'll leave them alone. Or at least supposedly that's what goes on behind the scenes. We've never been behind the scenes to know that.
All right, we're voting on the motion. I understand from, we're going to have to bring that up in another meeting.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Spires.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien is absent. Mr. Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Ellie Taylor.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay.
The second.
Notice of Whitman Town meeting rescheduled. I believe that we already jumped over that.
Still on.
Do that.
Still on transportation. Can we come back?
Chris?
I think John, I think John's got one more item.
Okay, John, I'm sorry. That's right. You do.
Not a problem. We have, we have another transportation provider. I want you to to give me permission to settle with, and that's Fox Transportation. It's a much smaller company. Um, they provide specialized sped transportation. Um, uh, similar situation, somebody that we have an agreement with that has, uh, and in fact, we'll be continuing to work with them over the summer. We expect any way for the extended school year program, assuming we have some in-district part of it. Um, same sort of situation. They have committed to certain expenses and mobilization expenses to be prepared to provide transportation. Um, we've come to an agreement in principle for thirty-four percent of what would be the the regular cost that they would be, that they would be collecting. And so I'd ask you to approve that.
An entertaining motion, Mr. Boyce.
So moved.
Second by Mrs. Taylor.
Okay, any further, any discussions? Ally and then Fred.
What is the thirty-four percent of that contract look like? What's that figure?
It's going to be about thirty-four percent of, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, round numbers.
Okay. Fred?
Uh, and that was exactly my question because, uh, I don't believe we're going to see anything reimbursable even with the Student Opportunity Act, uh, supposedly starting off, uh, I'm sure that's gone, that twenty-five percent, so.
Okay, any further discussions or questions? Seeing none. Moves to the vote, Mr. Boyce.
Yes.
Spire.
Yes.
Mr. Colley.
Yes.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Bobby O'Brien's absent. Chris Scriven.
Yes.
Mr. Small.
Yes.
Ellie Taylor.
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, John, I apologize for trying to move on by Fox Transportation.
No problem. Thank you very much.
So thank you.
So Bob, before we jump, uh, to the next, the Q and A, I know we moved, uh, the the town meeting conversation. So we were anticipating at the last school meeting approximately a fifty percent, um, contractor, a fifty percent, uh, savings from first student. This lowers it a little bit. I will probably bring a, uh, a, a recommendation uh, to this committee at our next meeting before the end of this fiscal year to use the savings that we've just seen um, to purchase our ELA curriculum out of the district budget. Um, it will approval from this committee because the savings we would get from this would move over to E and D, which wouldn't be attainable or accessible to us until October. Um, that's why it's, it's important that we get a conversation about using FY twenty money, uh, before we move it over to E and D. And this would be able to get us the ELA curriculum, thus potentially reduce, if up to the committee, reducing um, something out of our district budget and purchasing a a curriculum that is partially remote and that we would be able to use if we did go remote next year. And potentially if we don't have a budget with the increased class sizes of our students or for our teachers next year, this would be another teaching tool that they could use. So I just wanted to put it out there to you folks. Uh, if you have questions over the next couple of weeks, email them to me about this. But it might be a way for us to to, uh, use FY twenty money before it goes to E and D for a purchase of something we're going to need. And if we are, uh, under fiscal control of the commissioner, I will not be able to use that as of July first. So just food for thought. Um, I was not anticipating thirty-five percent. I was looking at fifty percent. And this money might be able to be really, uh, well-used before we enter the next school year. So that was just something I wanted to add so you could think about that.
Fred, you have a question?
Yeah, uh, should we schedule that for June twenty-ninth for that meeting? After reorder, because we have to vote that before July first. In order to be able to use that money, correct?
It will be a school committee meeting. There will be an agenda other than just the reorder. That will be a school committee meeting.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure everyone.
Correct. That's why we're looking at the twenty-nine. So that we were able to use, you know, do this in this fiscal year.
Thanks, Bob. I just wanted to go back to my question to Frank, if I could, about, uh, whether or not there'll be any accommodations, um, for, you know, inclement weather, um, as it relates to quarrels and.
I can't answer that right now because we haven't disposed of.
Okay, thank you.
Old Farm's almanac calls for it to be warm with the possibility of thunderstorms from July twenty-seventh through the thirty-first.
Thank you.
If you believe in Old Farm's almanac.
Fred, they're going to put you on the eleven o'clock news if you're looking for. I guess what, I might ask what the, what the plans are if you get bad weather on graduation.
Bring an umbrella.
Rain or shine. It could be a rain or shine outside event.
Kind of what I'm thinking, but.
Yep.
I don't know how people would feel about that. Jeff, it wouldn't be the first bad event we did in a Whitman Hanson graduation, believe me. Chris Howard.
Dan, fire up the tent.
So before we leave that, um, ELA curriculum component, Jeff, can you clarify, was that in the proposed FY twenty-one budget or it was not?
It was.
Okay, thank you.
And Jeff, could you just give a dollar amount, if you can remember, one forty-five?
For the curriculum? Yeah, it's one forty-five.
Okay. Anyone else? This is just food for thought. It's going to be brought up at another meeting. We're not voting it this evening. John?
Is that a recurring one forty-five K cost year after year for that curriculum?
It it's a three-year, three-year cost for a six-year license. So usually like they, they like the cost upfront. We were able to negotiate a three-year, uh, yearly payment. Um, so yes, F, in the following year, we we're going to owe another one forty-five and then another one forty-five for a six-year license. It's a cycle.
So essentially, we would be adding it to the budget for FY two to carry on.
Correct.
Thank you.
About a four hundred and thirty-five dollar cost total.
Sorry. Yeah, so this is, this is, I I got bank finance on my head, so forgive me if this makes no sense and this is probably more for John. So if it's a three-year cost for a six-year life, is there a way to spread that one forty-five, one forty-five, one forty-five over the remain, over the total of six years, almost like a depreciation expense? I don't know if you can do that at municipal finance.
They they wouldn't let us do that. The company wouldn't let us do that. I asked for.
Can we do that on our budget? So if, for example, it's almost like a capitalized expense that you depreciate over time? I have no idea if you can do this on.
All right, I'm just throwing it over to John.
We'd have to borrow it, wouldn't we?
Uh huh, yeah. You'd have to borrow.
Yeah, at at this point in time, we're making a contract commitment to to a series of payments, so we're not actually going out and borrowing the money. Um, I don't believe that we can finance, um, a textbook series and a software license, if you will.
Okay.
I'd have to fully look into it, but I, but I, it would be unusual at best.
Okay.
It's a new times. Okay, everybody good with that? That was just food for thought. Jeff is giving you, keeping your thought process for the next meeting, which is coming up the twenty-ninth of this month. John?
I'm sorry, one last question. Will you be providing the committee with, um, revised budget documents to reflect those number changes? As you're proposing, Jeff?
Right now, I want to make sure that we have the funds from transportation first, but yeah, we'll we'll provide you as much information of where we're at. Um, and any other recommendations coming up on the twenty-ninth. Uh, right now, it's, as as this is fluid and John just did this contract, we want to make sure, but I wanted it to to put this in your thought process that we're going to use or funds in FY twenty that we can before they roll over to E and D to purchase some things. Oh, it's a one-time expense. I can't use this for for staff or anything like that. It's a one-time expense before it rolls over to E and D.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Boyce?
I'll write the eulogy and and give the eulogy for Scott first and, uh, when we move to the new, uh, ELA program. I started at Indian Head in two thousand and one with Mrs. McGann, so, um, and she wasn't even Mrs. McGann at the time. So we're both, we're both, uh, contribute to that. Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
I'll keep that in mind. Okay. Next up, we're with the Whitman Town meeting date, correct?
Yep.
Everybody's okay with that?
Yep. So the the last thing for my report, uh, we put together, uh, I asked the committee to think as 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 taxpayers, as community members, to put together a a a list of questions that people might have, uh, on our budget, on our budget cycle, on the assessment methods and, um, folks in this committee, I appreciate you providing me those questions and I tried to answer them as best I could so that you could have talking points for your constituents and the members of of the community on, uh, on these questions. Well, I first, I, before we go into those questions or if anybody has any questions on the questions, um, I just want to let you know some of the things that I've been fielding as far as as questions from from folks in town. Uh, Mr. Anderson from Whitman FinCom called me the other day and invited me to attend a FinCom meeting via Zoom to discuss, uh, non-mandated transportation. I believe folks have been talking about non-mandated transportation equipment. Uh, some folks have have some plans out there, uh, that he would like to discuss with me. Um, I was very honest with Mr. Anderson and said I'd be sure to join them on a Zoom. But, uh, right now, transportation, I don't even know how we're going to get kids to school next year based upon current, um, current, uh, recommendations from the state. I don't know if we really can transport, uh, kids effectively and cost effectively, uh, to school. Uh, the other thing on that transportation, we were on a conference call with the commissioner and, uh, that question, I think Mr. Howard asked me a couple of months or a couple of weeks ago, it seems like months ago, about not mandated transportation, that it's the law that regional school districts transport their students. Uh, it was a by Mr. Bell, the CFO of Desi, uh, and that's a legislative issue. Uh, we would actually, and there might be some draft legislation to relieve school districts or regional school districts if the mandates for transportation can't be met or aren't fiscally, or we wouldn't be able to cover the costs of those. So that's out there. Right now, it is the law that we have to transport kids. And right now, I'm not sure how we could really do that, uh, in the current requirements, um, set forth uh, within the Commonwealth of of ten kids or twelve kids on a bus. So more details to follow, but it is legislative. So that would have to be required from the legislature to relieve us of that. So Mr. Anderson called me on that. I did receive something from from, uh, Hanson Selectmen, uh, today, inviting me to their Zoom meeting on Tuesday. As you know, last week I sent out a packet of information to the school committee and both boards of selectmen on what an FY twenty budget looks like, uh, who determines what an FY twenty budget, twenty budget, one twelfth would be if, uh, the commissioner takes over on July first. Um, they're asking me to attend that meeting. They're asking me to attend that meeting and clarify some questions they they might have on a one twelfth. What I want to share with the with you and the and the folks here is we're coming close to July one. I had a conversation with Christine Lynch a week and a half ago about the submission of information I sent to DESI about our one twelfth, what it might look like. And she affirmed that the commissioner would be looking at things, commissioner and and or designee. And he determines a one twelfth budget based on the statutory method and the last budget that was approved by both towns, which would be our FY twenty budget. He will look at extenuating circumstances, but I want this committee to know that we are one of probably a hundred and fifty regional school districts that will not have a budget because of the lack of a town meeting budget by July first. So I don't think he's gonna go through the Whitman Hansen proposal with a fine tooth comb. I think the July budget will be pretty much what every other district's gonna get. And once those districts approve their budget and 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 relief from the DESI oversight of fiscal responsibility, he might look at us more. My goal is to have our budget in in at both town meetings. So we have, we were able to say, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Riley, and and or designee, and we're on our own as of August first. But I want the committee here to know that it will be a one twelfth of fiscal twenty, and it's the statutory method. And those are some of the questions that came up. I'm sure that's what Hanson Selectmen are gonna ask me about. But I wanted the committee to know that Whitman FinCom asked me to talk about non mandated transportation as well. I'm sure anyone who wants to join that meeting can do that. I told Mr. Anderson I'd be available at a further date, but I needed to get through our meeting and 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 close up school first. And then, as you see in in your packet, is the list of Q and A's, the FAQ document that I put together based on the questions that you asked. My goal is to, if if everything seems okay with this committee, to post those on our school website, use those as as talking points when I meet with the Duval PTO or the Hanson PTO, any of the other parent groups in in district that have asked to meet with me, using that document as a as a handout for them or as a reference for them. I think that the questions that were asked were were pretty comprehensive. I hope the answers I gave were pretty comprehensive. Some of the answers include a website or a place for those folks to go for backup information. It seems like sometimes when when I say something, people send to second guess what I say. So I provide the backup documentation from that. It is what it is. These are, these are the standards of what we're following. This is some of the same information that we've been saying since September. But I think the questions were were very, were pretty poignant, and I think the answers will provide both towns with some some accurate information and provide you some talking points about what will happen if we don't have a budget in July, if we don't have a budget in August, what it will mean for our classes. I want to remind the committee that we did riff or do a reduction enforced to a hundred and seventeen people. Some folks have have said that I didn't have to do that. I want to clarify that Mass General laws say that by June fifteenth, all non professional status teacher need to be affirmed that they have a contract for the following year. So if you watch, if you see the news or read the papers, you will see that quite a few districts have laid off their non PTS teachers and even gone further. We did go further because of the lack of a budget potentially. One of the overarching fears that I have is we haven't seen governor's budget, and that might affect us with chapter seventy cuts. We received close to twenty four million dollars or twenty four point six million dollars in chapter seventy eight. There's a reduction, and we've been told we should plan for a five percent to a twenty percent cut in 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 chapter seventy. That's the other reason we went deeper into our cuts or our riffs, because even if we do have a budget, and I I I hope that we do have a budget, once the governor's budget comes out and there's a reduction of ten percent of chapter seventy, that might affect us by two, two million dollars plus. So we had to do that by law for our non PTS staff, but we also are preparing for the worst case scenario. If we don't approve a budget and we're in FY twenty, and if there's a a a decrease in chapter seventy eight. I want the committee to know that the people that we riffed are real people. Some of those folks are buying houses. We've had to affirm at least three times so far, if people have jobs, they are reapplying for mortgages, buying cars. They are our staff. We need them. They are people. They are not, I didn't do this for show, to wave a wand, to say, if you don't, we had to do this, and I'm fearful that we're not gonna have a budget, and these cuts will be real. So I wanted to dispel the fact that these are real, these are real people. And having the conversations, we have already had a few people take positions elsewhere because they need a job. And right now, as of June thirtieth, we have a hundred and seventeen people that are not, are not, will not have a contract. On that note, we are trying to bring back as many people we think we might be able to to sustain, because as of July first, anybody without a contract can apply for unemployment, which will be a drain on the district funds that we have in the summer. We pay forty cents on the dollar for unemployment. So anybody that doesn't have a contract will be able to access unemployment. Thus, bringing us further down into the hole of not having any money. So we've got quite a few things going on here, and those are some of the questions that you can answer to your public or to your to your constituents, that those are real positions, those are real jobs. In the document, you will see what class sizes will be like with the reductions at the K to eight will be and the reductions at the high school. So this is real. This is what we were planning for. I'm hoping cautiously optimistic we get a budget and there's no chapter seventy cuts. But the realism is that we might have a double whammy of no budget fiscal twenty oversight of the commissioner and a reduction in chapter seventy.
Chris, I have Fred, then you. Fred?
And Jeff, and what I want to bring up, and I'm actually a little bit enthused that you were invited to a FinCom meeting, you know, more particular Whitman FinCom. I implore anybody, if you have any questions, to please contact the superintendent of the administration. Not for people to be sitting in a meeting and saying, well, the superintendent can do this or the superintendent can do that, when in fact, it's not true. They don't know what they're talking about, and it's very frustrating. We're at a dire strait right now. And to answer to the fallout, well, so and so says you can do this. It doesn't work that way. Okay, they're not the superintendent, and Jeff knows what he can and can't do. There are many things that are under his control that he can do, and there are some things that are under this committee's control and what we're responsible for. But for people to go off half baked and making statements, it does nothing but cause, you know, grief and aggravation. And I implore anybody, you know, take a look in the mirror, because you're not helping the situation. You're hurting things. And that's, I I wanted to bring that out. You mentioned you were invited to the FinCom meeting. You know, we put our trust and confidence in you, Jeff. If someone has a suggestion, I suggest that they bring it to you. That's the proper venue, and that's the proper way that it should be preceded by. I'll leave it for that.
Chris Scriven.
Thanks, Bob. And a couple of things. First of all, assuming this is approved by the committee, Jeff, could you tell us when you published this?
It'll go up tomorrow morning.
Thank you. The second part was, I'm just, I think it's important to to communicate this scenario. Let me see, number eighteen addresses it. And it has to do with if the budget isn't approved in both towns, and we know that the amendment has to be approved as well. I guess I I could direct this to Chris Howard and and ask if you could give us a scenario from Hanson's side of this, you know, what, compare their assessment now to what their assessment would be if we went to a one twelfth budget.
Okay, I think it's a fair thing, though. If you're gonna talk about question eighteen, I probably should read it. So anybody listening. If the proposal, if the proposed FY twenty twenty one budget doesn't pass, what will be cut? The answer is, if a budget is not passed at both town meetings, the commission will establish a one twelfth budget based on fiscal two thousand and twenty figure. This will be a reduction of between thirty five to forty position. That was the question, correct, Chris?
Yeah, just one of the ones that addresses the one twelfth, yes.
Chris Howard, would you like to answer that?
Well, yeah, because so I, Chris and I are on the same page, because I think as I listen to Jeff speak, there is a lot of information out there, and this is a complex thing. But I think there's some really simple numbers that are really important, specifically on the Hanson side. So Jeff had given us a handout a couple of weeks ago with the one twelfth budget. And that one twelfth budget is fifty two million, four hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred and thirty eight dollars. To use some round numbers, that one twelfth budget would result in a Hanson assessment of eleven point four million dollars. The budget as it's presently presented and proposed, which includes the amendment for Hanson, would result in an assessment of eleven point seven five million dollars. So it's a variance of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. So compromise, the amendment, everything that goes along with it, from just sheer dollars and cents, and I'll get back to the the carnage piece in a second, sheer dollars and cents, eleven, seven, five, as presented, and that requires an override, that require, from a funding standpoint, it requires the amendment to pass. It requires all of everything that's been presented at Hanson. If not, we go to one twelfth, and the that that bottom line number is eleven point four. So, simple math, if we're gonna save three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we're gonna decimate the district to do it, and concurrently, because Finance Committee and Hanson and and Hanson have said we need eight hundred thousand, that still means even in that scenario, we're four hundred and fifty thousand dollars short, which means there's gonna be four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cuts to the town of Hanson in critical departments. So I think it's really important to understand those numbers. And when you look at the whole package that's been presented to the town of Hanson, I think it's really a support for what Hanson needs, not just what the schools need, it's what Hanson needs in order to maintain all the services it has. So there's a lot of numbers flying out there. I've heard, you know, kick it back, they can bring the number down, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. A one twelfth budget, it's eleven four. It doesn't get any lower than a, it doesn't get any lower than one twelfth, folks, right? Because remember, there is a partner in this equation, which is the town of Whitman. So, you know, worst case, we disagree, we end up in one twelfth. I'm 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 finding it hard pressed to find a scenario where we're, we're going well below that. And that one twelfth figure in Hanson is largely driven by the fact we moved to a full statutory method. That's not driven by the town amendment, Whitman, that's driven by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So there's some really important things to just understand and make sure we get out in that message.
Thanks, Chris.
Sure.
And Chris, thank you both. If I was going to read this document, it's ten pages, and it has a tremendous amount of graphs on it. It'd be a long time. As the superintendent said, go to the Whitman Hanson website, look over the ten pages. There are several graphs and charts on it, and you will see exactly what's being talked about. In fact, Chris and Chris and myself were going to do a half hour cable show to explain just these exact things so there would be no confusion, because what just, Chris just told you was a very interesting fact that doesn't appear to be getting put out. And again, I I'm not a social media guy, so I don't know what's out there. I know there's a lot of banter going back and forth relating to some of what Mr. Small has said and some of what Chris just said about people floating numbers. It's a dangerous precedent to just float numbers out there when there are really other true numbers that the true hard facts come through at. Fred, then Dawn.
And, you know, the other, you know, secondary part of that, if we go to December first and we still haven't come up with a budget, now the commissioner steps in and they set the budget that they feel is educationally appropriate. I can't see them setting a budget that, needless, where we're already in the bottom ten or twelfth in per pupil spending. I would have to think they're gonna probably set a budget that's going to be in far more. And what do we, you know, what happens then? You know, and that really, you know, as you said, Chris, it's driven by the Commonwealth of Mass at this point, not by Whitman, not by anybody saying this is the way we should do things. It's driven by the Commonwealth of Mass and the statute. And that could all of a sudden be a mid year surprise that could really decimate a town.
So Fred, can I just jump in with that? So just for food for thought for the committee, the twenty eighteen, I did the twenty eighteen per pupil expenditure were twenty nine from the bottom and per pupil expenditure. And there, the chapter seventy allotment to our regional school district were thirty six from the top. So our per pupil is twenty from the bottom, but we're number thirty six in the state in getting chapter seventy eight. So just letting folks know, those are.
Basically, overpaid by the state, not paying enough by the towns.
Thank you, Mr. Cully. There's a chart, there's a graph that's included in the packet in the Q and A that shows chapter seventy allotment with our local communities, how much we get, and then, and what's paid for by the taxpayer. The the graph is telling, people can look at it, and I encourage people to hit our website tomorrow when Michelle uploads all the information. And and I concur with Mr. Hayes, please, or Mr. Small, whoever, call me, call George, call you guys, the school committee members. I will not respond to questions on social media. I will only respond via email or phone call. Just letting you folks know that.
Some of these things were just stated during a meeting. Crazy.
Dawn.
Thank you, Chair Hayes. I just want to keep our eye on the education that we're providing. I do want to say education should level the playing field. So our budget is something that we're presenting to prepare kids to compete with our area kids. I have two children in the school district. I know that if my kids need something, I'm available to provide it to them, like a tutor. As an elected official, what I worry about most is the children that I don't even know about. There, both towns have working families. There are parents with two jobs. There are kids who are home alone, and they may not have technology, and they're not gonna get summer enrichment programs. And there's gonna be regression in the fall, social, emotional, and academic. Before I was elected, I sat in that gallery for four years, watching school committee meetings and town meetings and board of selectmen meetings, and I heard the tone was always to fund the services to children last. And I sat there, and I watched as the leftovers of the municipal budget went to the school, as if it was insignificant piece of the town. As superintendent said, our teachers are humans. They need to pay their bills too. So this budget and this amendment is so important, and I do believe now is the time to turn it around. This district has been an excellent partner to both towns. This district has negotiated every year. Unfortunately, some years negotiating down and cutting the budget. I hear they want us to use more E and D if we have it. As superintendent said, we'll try to use it, but the reality is the law allows a district to hold E and D as a safety net of five percent of our budget. That could be two point five million dollars. South Shore Botec does that. They've actually given money back to the towns because they had too much money at some point. The capital expenses, there aren't very many for the district this year. It's minimal. Anything more would really compromise services to our kids. I just want to keep both towns in mind. Keep our eye on the ball and continue to work towards student achievement. At this time, I do want to make a motion. I would like committee to contact MASC, set up a series of workshops with the field reps at MASC to assist the committee with goal setting for improving student achievement. I want to create a clear vision of where we want to be in two thousand and twenty three.
I don't believe you have to make a motion to do that, Dawn, but. Would anyone? Go ahead.
I would like to make that motion that we, as a committee, work towards passing this amendment in this budget, but also working towards our vision for the future, because we can't set a budget if we don't know where we're going. And I think that's the important part to tell both our towns. This is where our district is going. This is our plan. This is our vision. So I would like to have help in doing that. MASC offers that help. So I would like to have help in doing that, MASC offers that help, and it is available.
Well, so what exactly is your motion? You added a few things there.
My motion is to contact MASC and set up a series of workshops with the field reps to set goal setting for improving student achievement.
Do I have a second? Mr. Boyce? You're muted.
Second.
Discussion.
Bob, Chris.
Chris, go ahead, I'm just going back and forth and then.
So, so, so through you to Dawn, I guess, help me understand the, how that would differ than what we're, what we are and or should be doing under the district strategic plan.
Dawn.
How that differs from the strategic plan?
We have a three-year strategic plan for the district. I think Jeff's literally holding it in his hands presently. We have a three-year strategic plan for the district. So are we disregarding that? Are we eliminating it? What, what, what are we doing?
Well, I don't have a copy of that in front of me, but I would like to know that specifically, I guess what I'm asking for, is a plan on how this district attains full-day kindergarten, and how we achieve improving student achievement, right? And, and creating a budget forward, so these towns know what to expect too. So.
Fred.
And, Chris, you again stole some of my thunder, because it's written out in our strategic plan, you know, that comes from the administration, as to where they want to take the district. And we vote and approve the strategic plan, you know, pretty much annually. And we get to see exactly where we're at, et cetera. But one of the largest components in anything is also the financial piece, and knowing how we're going to be able to pay for what we want to do and what we want to accomplish. It's, you know, fantastic, our, you know, strategic plans since I've been on the committee, has included full-day K. The only way that's gonna happen is going to be through an override. And unfortunately, year after year after year, we simply are fighting for our lives just to put a budget together to try and sustain level services, never mind, you know, go forward with anything else. Three years ago, we did have, as part of our strategic plan, an override or a SOS group, or the Student Success Budget, as it was called. And I believe you were very much a part of that group in trying to get that passed. But it failed, the taxpayer spoke, the voter spoke, and it failed. So now you're on to Plan B. You know, we, you know, we are at the mercy of the, of the taxpayer and voter. You know, they have to appropriate the funds that we need in order to do the right thing. All we can do is advocate and try and educate, and beg, borrow for the monies that we need. I got excited, I found something about a program that might offer a grant. You know, I'm emailing it to Jeff, saying, you know, hey, you know, maybe this is an idea. You know, anything we could do to try and find some extra dough. You know, that's what we need to do. I don't know by having this motion does anything. You know, we do have a strategic plan. I don't, I don't believe it really gets us anywhere further, so to speak.
Anyone else?
I believe it does, I believe it does, there's governance, there's support, there's workshops that help to guide us in effective meetings, and also, we could have a plan to phase in full-day kindergarten. There are other towns who have done that. I don't think it's an all-earning override, and no, you can't have full-day K. So, I'm trying to improve what we are offering, and it's for the future. I know it's not changing the budget right now.
Okay, but how do you pay for it, when you can't, when you're laying off people, when you're cutting your, your services that are offered, year after year after year? How do you accomplish it?
Is there a fee with MASC, field reps coming for support?
No.
I do not know the answer to that question.
No.
You'd have to, you can call your buddy Tracy. Well, they do charge for some of their, they charge for some of their meetings, they charge for some of the work that they do, as does Mars.
Sorry, Chair Hayes, is there a fee for MASC?
I don't, I don't believe, but it depends on how in-depth that you get them. I know that Jim Hardy has come to meetings before and asked questions. I know that some of the other people have come, I know that you would, you talked about him as a field rep. There's another gal, like, I believe her name's Tracy Novak, or Novick?
Say Novak.
Novick.
Novick, I didn't want to pronounce it wrong. I know that she's available to ask questions, but to physically do a workshop, that part I couldn't tell you. It would depend on how in-depth it's got. Chris has got his hand up, maybe he has some input. Chris Howard?
I was just gonna suggest, but again, I think what we're trying to do is work through the building of a strategic plan. You know, Jeff is essentially the CEO of the district, I would be looking for him, that's part of his job to build that plan. I think bringing in additional resources, whether it's MASC or otherwise, is perhaps a good idea. But I would be looking for his guidance on kind of how we want to build that plan. It sits out on the website, it runs through two thousand twenty, so perhaps we're due for an update anyway, so the timing of this might be good. But I'm not sure, a motion to bring reps in, it's, it's a little bit of kind of putting the cart in front of the horse, so to speak, in terms of, I would be looking for Jeff to kind of build the strategic plan, bring in the resources he needs to do it, and then present that to us as a committee. And that should incorporate things like what you're, exactly what you're talking about, Dawn. Where do we want to go? What are we trying to do? What are our goals? All of that should be included in scope. But, but as I'm listening to you, I think we're really talking about strategic plan. So I don't know if Jeff has, I don't know if I'm off the reservation, Jeff, or you're.
No, so, so it's interesting, because we were working on the strategic plan before we went out for COVID. So we have a rough draft of, of a template of what we're looking at to get in front of the committee. I understand where Dawn's going to as well. Our, our, our plan was that, five years ago, to include a lot of these things. And, and we're putting them to paper, and I think a lot of our plan right now is putting ideas to paper, where we want to be in the next three to five years. And it's always come back to, in my experience of ten years, is, you know, we put it there, we put it forth, and then we, our funding has been an issue. So I know, I, I think putting together the strategic plan and trying to get a, a, a plan for this committee, for this district, and, and with the support of the community, is where we want to go. But I do have a, a copy, a rough draft of the plan, that we were really working on in February, right before we went out with, with this. So I think we have a vision of where we want to go. I think going back to Mr. Small, it's always been an issue of, of how the two towns want to fund that. And, and that's where we lie. But I, I do want to deliver a vision, a mission for our, our children and our communities. Now, I, I think, and to Dawn's point, the communities need to step up, agree to that vision, and then financially support that vision.
Ellie. You're muted, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, oh my God, no, I just lost my train of thought. I know, I, Dawn, I completely understand where you're coming from, and, and I think the issue is, is, yes, Jeff was working on the strategic plan, which is pretty much what you were asking for. But I think the problem is, is that we can't, the towns can't fund a level services budget, they're struggling to do that. So, it would be absolutely ideal to add in more and say, look, this is what we want to bring back. But if they can't even fund the budget right now for bare bones minimum, how, they, they need to figure out their stuff first, before we can throw other things at them and say, this is what we want to bring back. Do not get me wrong, do not misunderstand me, we need to bring back programs. We need back, we need to bring back more foreign languages, we need to even, God, like, home ec in the middle schools, like, anything like that, it would be such a welcome return. But I think right now, the bigger issue is, the towns need to figure out where all this additional revenue is gonna come from. That's the problem, they just don't have the revenue.
Fred? Fred, Dawn, then we're gonna move to the vote on the motion, because we've got other stuff to do.
Okay, and also, part of the Student Opportunity Act, if I'm not mistaken, is the submission of the, of a strategic plan to the, to DESI, or to the commissioner. Am I correct about that, Jeff, if you could just confirm or deny? I thought it was part of that, as the Student Opportunity Act.
It's a small part of it, Fred, it's just a small part. But we're required to have a strategic plan. So, I mean, it's not part of the Student Opportunities Act, but each district is required to have a, a strategic plan for, for, as we move forward. And that's, that's given to DESI every, once it's renewed. So, but this committee will have the opportunity to vote on that plan, and give input to that plan too, before we finalize that.
Great, thank you.
Dawn? Dawn?
Right, thank you, Chair. I'm just looking back at the chart that Superintendent provided. How does what the towns of Whitman and Hanson pay compare to surrounding communities? So, out of twenty surrounding communities, Whitman-Hanson towns pay the least amount towards the services of children, education. So it is a choice on what the towns choose to pay out of their municipal budget. That's my response.
Okay. We're moving to the vote, everybody understand Dawn's motion? Any further questions? Seeing none, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Miss Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Cully?
No.
Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. O'Brien is absent. Mr. Scriven?
No.
Mr. Small?
No.
Ellie Taylor?
No.
Bob Hayes? No. Okay, motion doesn't carry. Excuse me. So, just in finishing up with school committee Q and A on budget, ladies and gentlemen, please go to the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District webpage, and look under Budget Questions and Answers. This is a tremendous document, it is ten pages long. It has a lot of graphs and charts that will give you exact information that you need, that comes direct from the districts. As you heard the superintendent, superintendent say earlier, and he said, to please call him, or to call his assistant, George Farrell, the Assistant Superintendent. If you have any questions that need to be answered, you can call school committee members, all of us are available. If you look on the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District website, you will see our profiles and our email addresses on how to get ahold of us. Don't listen to people that are just surmising what's going on. Look at the facts, make a decision that's educated, and what you want to see as a community, because this is going to determine for years to come, what the communities of Whitman and Hanson want to see as a regional school. What you want to provide for services in both communities, and I do not mean the school services. I mean police, fire, DPW, what you want to provide and where you want to move to. It's a very important document, please look at it, study it. If you have any questions, again, do not hesitate to call us, that's what we're elected to do. If you don't get the answer that you think is correct, call the next individual. We have the same answer, there is no differences here. And we want this budget to get passed in this override in Hanson. If, if you read the document, you'll see how critical it is. Thank you. Next up, Proposed Regional Agreement Amendment. It's consideration of submitted changes from the town of Whitman. Jeff, you want to go over that?
Sure, so, so the amendment to the agreement that we sent out to both towns, I sent it to Frank and John. Whitman Council made some adjustments to that, and that's why I invited Frank here to, to maybe go over those adjustments. I did run it by our, by our council, and he was okay with the, the legal adjustments on that. But this committee needs to reaffirm this amendment before it goes to, because it was generated from this committee. So Mr. Lytton's on here, if he wants to add to what, what the things are.
Sure, Jeff, the purpose in, in having this review, there were a number of questions that related to the first draft of the agreement that was sent to both towns. And what I asked our council to do was review it for completeness, conformity, and clarity. And what I provided you, because it was a, you know, a bit of a rewrite, is an analysis by our counsel, Nancy Campani, as to why she proposed the changes that she did. And it all makes sense to me. It actually better clarifies the position of what Hanson's responsibility would be on the statutory method, ensuring that the per pupil assessment for the balance of the agreement is in fact followed that way. Just, just points of clarity.
No, so, as you see in your packet, those are the changes, those are the rationale for changes. And my recommendation is the committee adopt these changes to this agreement. I did invite Mr. Stanbrook to this meeting, I wasn't aware if he was available, if he's on. I don't know if John's on. But Hanson has not provided any, anything at this point regarding the agreement. So this would be an amendment to the agreement that this committee could approve. If Hanson then responds back, we are meeting again before town meeting, if, if they have some things that they would like to change in that language.
Jeff, I would like to note that, at the same time I sent the agreement to you, I also sent it to Hanson.
Correct. Thank you.
And Frank, did you hear anything back from Hanson?
No.
Okay, so you're not looking for the committee to vote to propose changes tonight, are you?
Well, that's up to you, it, it, it is the agreement that we are proposing to present to our town meeting. So it certainly will be up to the Regional School Committee if they want to recommend that. If not, then we reengage the racist committee and start over.
We have, you've moved your town meeting to July twenty-seventh?
Correct.
And we'll be meeting again June twenty-ninth, does that fit in your timeframe?
Sure. Yeah, our, our warrant is already posted. All the warrant does is it refers to acceptance of the agreement, which will be available for our voters to review online. So it doesn't affect the warrant language.
Okay, so the twenty-ninth, it gives you, leaves you time, Chris?
Sure.
Yes, I think, I think Jeff kind of answered the concerns, has our attorney reviewed it? Yes. Has Hanson, or, and or Hanson's attorney reviewed it? We're not sure, but they've been asked. So, you know, if, if we're not gonna vote it tonight, perhaps what Jeff could just do is a simple email to John and just say, hey, we've gotten this from Whitman, we're ready to take this up at our next meeting, so, so we can avoid, we approve it tonight, and then Hanson has changes.
Yes.
In circles, let's just set the expectation, let's get this done, to get, to get Frank what he needs, and everyone else what they need, and we put this to bed. Maybe, maybe that's the way we can go. But if you could just follow up maybe with an email, Jeff, to say, hey, we got it tonight, we're prepared to move forward.
That's, that's kind of what I was asking Frank, because there's no sense if we, if we vote it, and it gets approved, or doesn't get approved, it's gotta be bantered back and forth. Let's make sure that both towns are in agreement with the changes, and then we'll vote it. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
I mean, I'll give you a little latitude to discuss it if you want. Everybody okay with it? Okay, Fred, go ahead a little bit.
Yeah, and just, you know, making sure that Hanson has the opportunity to look at it, and that if there's something that they don't like, you know, just time is of the essence for them to get back to Whitman. So, everyone can be on the same page, so that, because I do think it does require our vote in order to go to DESI as well.
Yes, it does.
It does, it definitely does. Okay, we'll put it on for the twenty-ninth. And Jeff, can you get ahold of Mr. Stanbrook?
Absolutely, yep.
Tomorrow, and see, see where this is going?
Yes, yes, sir, will do.
Thank you. Next up, Proposal of the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Committee Resolution, COVID-nineteen State Funding. This is something that has been brought before. This is something that has been brought before a bunch of different school committees across the state. And I'll quickly read it, and they're all looking to band together, because as you know, there's going to be, you heard from the superintendent stating that there's somewhere between 1.7 million and 1.9 million if they move forward in cost open school. And these are going to be, could be, I'll read it to you, unfunded mandates. So this is what the resolution is stated July 17th, 2020. It's to the governor, Charlie Baker. It's to the Secretary of Education, James Peasner. It's to the Mass Commissioner of Education, Jeffrey Riley. Mass Senate President, Karen Spilka, and Mass House Speaker, Robert DeLeo. Copies are also sent to Mike Brady, our state senator, state reps Josh Cutler and Allison Sullivan, Frank Lyman, Town Administrator Whitman, John Stanbrook, Town Administrator Hanson. Whereas if schools are to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is a responsibility of each school to do so safely and responsibly. And whereas it is a responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation, and material expenses required to do this. And whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed, without ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement of whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure a state-type school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. In big letters, there can be no unfin- unfunded mandates for COVID-19. And respectfully, Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee and all of our members have to sign it. This is going to require a vote of this committee and a signature of this committee. That is the exact document that I just read you that's going to be presented and sent to, uh, the people that I read up front.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Scriven? I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Boyce.
Is there any questions, ladies and gentlemen, or discussions? It's pretty cut and dried. As I read it, I know I went maybe a little fast, but the crux of it is, if they're going to require us to spend somewhere between 1.5 or 6 million to $2 million, they're going to have to fund it. Because as you heard earlier this evening, we're already in big trouble financially. So it's, uh, to take off the backs of the towns, and this is what we're trying to get for a resolution. Any further discussion? I'll move to the vote. Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Aspires?
Yes.
Mr. Colady?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien is absent. Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Absolutely, yes.
So that's an A Y?
Yeah.
Bob Hayes, yes. Okay. I believe we all have to sign it, so at some particular point, you're going to have to get in and get this signed so we can get it done. If it takes me bringing you the document, the, the document to you or coming to my office because schools close, no issue doing it. You can come to my office. Just let me know. You all have my phone number. Call me. We want to get this done and resolved. And hopefully they'll hear us loud and clear with all the rest of the school districts in the state. I know that a bunch of you have been working on it. Let's get it done. Thank you. Last but not least is the 2020-21, excuse me, school year calendar. Jeff?
So, so something that I, I want you to think about, uh, we established this, the first day of school is August 26th. One thing that, that came up in a meeting was that I, I have the authority to change the, the school calendar. That's under the purview of the school committee. So I'm bringing this to you to, to ponder, to think about. There's a strong probability that we might not have our full P P E to, uh, at our disposal by the beginning of school. Uh, we are one of the earlier schools to start at, at the 26th. Uh, I might be asking this committee, uh, to maybe reevaluate the start of school and move that to what we did to after Labor Day, which would give us some more time, which would give us a two-week period to make sure that we're ready to go and our schools are safe and we're prepared for the opening of school. Without the direction of the state right now, and the, and if we don't get it this week or next week, we're in a, in a six-week timeframe to reopen school. So I'm not asking for a change in the calendar yet, um, but I'm putting it out there that that might be a necessity or might be something that we should really consider at the June 29th meeting as the school calendar, uh, 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 of a change of the school calendar for next year.
Fred, then Mr. Boyce. Fred?
Uh, fi- financial implications in, uh, you know, leapfrogging into September on the 1/12th? If we don't have a budget, you know, as of that point, is it better or worse for you? Or does that, in other words, does that give you a little bit more time to figure some things out?
Well, it, it would, it would depend right now, because if, if we're not bringing staff in until September, I would assume we have the month of August that we are a little bit, we have a little bit more relief. I would have to check with, with John to see if we have major expenses as far as insurance. But, um, but yeah, we wouldn't be bringing in staff, so our, our, a chunk of our payroll wouldn't be, wouldn't be you. So it would, i- i- it's fiscally easier to be in a 1/12 for the month of August, um, without teachers coming back.
And would we have to, uh, uh, bargain that or, uh, you know, union position or, you know, be okay to, you know, touch base with the union? Because I believe it stated, uh, the date, uh, of August within the Unit 8 contract anyways.
Kevin, Kevin and Cindy are on this. I think we could talk about it, and we'll discuss that tomorrow too. Especially when we meet, we actually have a meeting tomorrow. But, uh, I, I think they might be amenable. I mean, again, this is something that is unexpected. Uh, we're going to have to prepare for opening, we've, an opening we've never had before. And I want to make sure that the, the, we're prepared with the proper equipment and protocols in place. And again, us, uh, when we voted the school calendar, we're thinking about, wow, you know, we're going to end up sometime in June next year. Um, the earlier the better. Well, see how this year panned out. Uh, we ended up in a very different spot. We're going to be opening in a very different spot. And again, I'm not asking the committee to, to make a change tonight, but, uh, maybe that's another question that you can get out to your constituents. You know, how does that work for you as parents if we move the start date, uh, for next year? Financially, it, it, it puts us off for the month of August. Um, but, you know, uh, i- i- it's, it's, I'm more concerned about how we're going to open with the, with the amount of P P E that we're, that we're supposed to get. We don't have the vendors yet to acquire that from. So again, I'll ask you this on the 29th of June.
Mr. Boyce, did you have a question?
Yes, do you need a motion here for anything?
No.
Because, um, well, no. I just want to be sure.
No, no, we're just, we're just making this something for you to think about between now and the next meeting. And, um, so before I take a motion to adjourn, you, you could have.
Dan's got his hand up.
I'm sorry, Dan.
I just want to add on to that, uh, with the calendar, maybe on June 29th we do it. The discussion, if we have to move this anyways, the discussion of snow days being remote. If we can put agenda also to discuss that.
So, so going back to Dan, that's a great question. Uh, in that remote survey, um, that I'm asked, or the, the survey to parents, one of the things that I'm going to see, if we have a, a, a very good remote plan, potentially petitioning, and I think I won't be the only one petitioning to the gov- or to the commissioner, that we use our remote plan for snow days next year. So we're, it's, it's the blizzard bag of two years ago, but this is more of an official remote plan. So that's in the works as well, Dan.
Okay, no, I just want to put it on there to make sure we get the backing for it.
Okay, two things. I had a couple. Who's up? Mr. Fred?
Fred.
Fred.
Could I just add on to that? And obviously I want my phone to ring off the hook tonight. Uh, any thoughts of readjusting winter breaks and February vacations? And perhaps shortening, perhaps, and being able to do remote learnings? Uh, you know, getting rid of a day or two here and there, uh, if we find ourselves with our backs against the wall because we're opening, you know, far later?
I, I think that'll be an association question that we'll bring up with them.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I had two, two questions, our discussions, our, our statements brought to me before the meeting, one at about 5:00 and one at about quarter of 7:00. All statements that are brought forward in public will be sent to the committee and the answer at the next meeting, as we have been doing since we've been doing this remote. So anybody that didn't think that we answered their question this evening, we will be answering it by the next meeting. You've taken in a lot of information tonight. I think tons of carrots. As I'm seeing it, I'm seeing more and more information. We're not trying to scare you. As you heard from the superintendent and you just heard from several members, we could be doing remote learning in September. We're not guaranteeing the schools will be open or closed in September. We're just guaranteeing that learning is going to go on. We're not sure how we see it. We're trying to make plans, so it's going to be fluid all the way up until the governor and some of the other people that are in charge tell us how we have to do this. So it might not be a bad idea for people to start making some plans of their own of what's going to happen. But we're not just changing things with the flip of a coin. We're going under the regulations of the state and how it being sent to us, and it's changing. So as we move forward, we will keep you as greatly informed as we possibly can. But please, and I hate to be redundant, I'm begging you, look at this 10-page document. And if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, any one of your school committee members, representatives, and we'll try to answer every single question that we possibly can. Thank you in advance for your patience. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move on, Dan?
Second, Mr. Boyce.
Steve Boyce?
Yes.
Aspires?
Yes.
Mr. Colady?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien is absent. Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. And again, thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for your service in the Whitman Hanson Regional School District. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Bobby.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Robbie.